Hey there.
Hi, Dan asked me to get the meeting started and I kept opening a meeting that had no people in it. So I couldn't figure out what was happening. So it took me minutes to figure that out. I was putting in the wrong meeting code, I guess. Or I didn't think I was putting in any meeting code, so I'm not sure what happened. Working now.
Has the meeting been going on already?
No.
Yeah, okay.
We just got in.
Okay.
And I just let Dan know.
Where is my list?
Dan said he was trying to get in a couple of minutes ago, so. Jennifer?
Yes.
He's having trouble getting in. Do you know, do you remember, happen to remember who our vice chair is? Yeah, I don't remember either, which I really should, because.
No, I don't. And I don't have, I brought the list, I had it in my Irving folder and I brought that back to the office.
I think it's me.
It's you?
I think so. But I have no idea what I'm doing, so.
So you, if we want to start with, oh, Dan, you can just call the meeting to order. We can help you.
Yeah, we'll help you. I've, you know, I've run it before and we'll help you. We just have to. So we have to start by just calling the order, the meeting to order and saying the time.
Okay, it is, it is 7:23 and we will call the meeting to order.
And then you can ask if there's any public hearings?
Are there any public hearings?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, so we don't see anything. We will move to our review of agenda and the calendar.
I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Warrants and gifts?
Bruce, do you have any warrants?
Well, made a norm or do you want Steve? Steve, I have one, so. I have two payable warrants, number 309, dated the first of November for $80,501.95. Number 310, dated the 15th of November for $85,322.91, at 85032.91. And two payable warrants, one dated the second of November for $20,803.50. And number 311 dated the 15th of November for $22,257.65. What we paid out this month.
Okay, so do I ask for a motion to approve these?
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay. Okay, and any gifts?
No gifts.
Okay, so we're now moving on to the approval of minutes from the October 21st meeting?
And we will need a motion in a second for the minutes.
I moved to approve the minutes for, what's the date?
October 21st.
October 21st.
A second.
And then you just ask all in favor and then we can vote.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Martell, aye.
Rose, aye.
Danny here?
It says connecting to audio.
Okay. I don't see that.
Now it doesn't say that. It says Daniel's iPhone. Dan, are you in? It looks like you're muted then.
Okay. I am sorry. I have no idea why it's such a problem.
It's okay.
I was on Zoom last night using the same iPad, so I have no idea.
Well, Bethany was a trooper and got us down to item F.
Thank you so much. Do you want me to continue or do you want to continue?
You can take over. I'm good.
Thank you, Bethany.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. And I apologize to everyone who has been patiently waiting. So F is unfinished business and we are going to talk about face coverings. Jackie unfortunately could not be here this evening, but did send us some information regarding a survey and some information that was emailed to us.
Yeah, and Jackie did share her recommendation after the survey, which was that masks outdoors be optional after enough time has passed for students to have access to both doses of the vaccine. January 3rd, 2022 seems like a reasonable date.
Okay, so Stephen, if you're on, I know that you had asked to put this on the agenda. Do you want to speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm really glad that we're, we're talking about this and Jackie's chosen January 3rd, but I'd really like to see it happen before that, maybe even mid-December at the latest. But if it has to be January 3rd, then that, that works for me because my issue with it is that once it gets cold, we are, you know, limiting the way that kids are interact, you know, because the play is so much different once it gets cold than it is when it's warm out. And I believe that the social distancing isn't quite as hard. And I'd like to get like, I'm not quite sure why parents weren't surveyed for this, but I mean, I'm really happy to see what we did. And the, but the big, another reason I wanted this on the agenda was I just wanted to state my disappointment in the fact that when we discussed this at our last meet, two meetings ago, no one mentioned the fact that the Board of Health was never involved in the decision to mask at recess in the first place. That, so that, thank you.
Well, I'll just speak, say a few things. I do realize there was some miscommunication there with the Board of Health. And I think we're all doing our best to try to meander through this whole situation. I know that when we discussed the masks at our last meeting, in that policy, we gave a lot of flexibility to Jackie for her to be able to make decisions based upon conditions. I know just recently Hatfield has been having a spike and they also started a mask mandate for students outdoors. So as much as I don't want to see the students, especially outdoors, wearing masks, I think my, my perspective really is let's try to keep as many people in school as possible. Students, teachers, everyone. So I think as conditions improve in the area, Jackie has the flexibility. I think she's trying her best to keep everybody happy. So I think my position would be to continue to give Jackie the flexibility to base decisions on conditions. But I see your point, Stephen, and truthfully, you know, wearing masks outside, you know, there's lots of different data and information in that respect. But trying to keep everybody happy is also important. And I look at it as keeping my nose warm. Would other members like to chime in?
I would just like to say that, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Lauren. I, I am really pleased to see that, that the students will continue to mask outside until after the students who, well, the, the families who want to get their children vaccinated have had that opportunity. And, and I'm pleased that, that, that our students will be wearing those masks until after the holiday break. I think that makes good sense.
Okay, and Lauren, did you want to add?
Um, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else with a hand up or anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay, well, I'll just end it that, you know, I appreciate everybody being patient. Conditions continue to change. I don't think any of us really know what's going to be happening next. Just today I was reading articles about people who are vaccinated, that hospitalizations are now going up for people who are vaccinated. There's certainly in Europe, I think they're seeing their highest cases ever. So I don't think we really know what's going to happen next. I think we're fortunate that administration has some flexibility to do what they think is best based on conditions. And of course, I would suggest and encourage the continued communication with Board of Health. Okay. If there's nothing else, let's move on to G and it's going to be homeschool application. Do we have a motion to accept the homeschool application?
I'll make a motion to accept the homeschool application.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call, just your name and I, haze eye?
Martell, aye.
Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so I think it passes with everyone. All right, FY23 draft budget. Bruce, you want to speak to that?
I'm gonna share my screen and. I can't share my screen.
We did all receive the budget, but for those watching, it might be helpful.
Yeah, but that says the host is disabled, so.
And Lauren, is that you?
I don't know how to enable it because I didn't disable it on purpose, so.
So unfortunately, Bruce, we're gonna have to wing it.
Okay, well, you should have been sent when I'm going to share with you.
If I made you a co-host, would that allow you to do that, you think?
Yes.
All right, then, oops.
It still says the host is disabled. So we gotta find the screen sharing here.
All right, now you're a co-host.
There we go. No, that's not mine, what? Oh, come on, where'd my Zoom meeting go? What are you guys seeing?
We can see the title screen. Bruce, do you have a Mac or a PC?
I have a PC.
I am gonna be no help to you then.
I thought I'm done with, instead of share. So we're in here.
We can see it.
You're not seeing the screen that I've got.
We see the page that says Shute's Elementary School Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Draft, November 18th.
You can see that?
Yep, we can see that.
Oh, okay.
Flip the page.
Okay, now we gotta get minus out of here. Okay, so if you can see that.
It's moving.
All right. So this is just the major driver's page. The major driver, as you can see, is really the gross instruction. And, you know, don't panic now because it's, I go through, you're gonna see how we're gonna cover a lot of that $207,000 increase there. So I'm gonna flip the page. And I like to go to the presentation page, so. Get there where I want to go. There we go. As big as I want it to be. Anyway, we'll go forward from here. This year, U28's proportional share for Shute's Berry is down another, I think it's close to a percent. So, and the administrative portion of the budget, there's actually a decrease of $3,179. And then we're gonna go through, I'll highlight the areas that we've got the bigger increases in. We can then can speak to the principal salary, but we're proposing a 4% increase there to make that a full year position.
Would you like me to start my discussion, Bruce?
Sure.
So every year we discuss the amount of work that needs to get done in the summertime. And as you know, or may not know, our principals do not work a full calendar year. They have just days worked. And the bulk of the time is typically taken off during the summer. And so I did a job audit of year-round duties and tasks that need to be done from June through August. And those include consultation with custodial and building staff and supervision of facility maintenance with the custodians, consultation with office administration relative to busing and data entry. And I'll talk about the data entry part a little bit later. That's what needs to be done with the state. Consultation with staff, a lot of hiring is done in the summer. And so when principals are hiring staff, it's typically on time that they're not paid for. Capital improvement planning and management, a lot of that occurs during the summer, designing schedules for all staff, special schedules, intervention schedules, et cetera. Planning for professional development at the school and district level. And a variety of reporting to DESI in consultation with the building secretaries and especially with the superintendent's office, school safety and discipline report, student information management system, the SIMS data, which is what our funding is based on, EPIMS, which is Education Personnel Information Management System. And that's all of the reporting that goes to the state on all of the professional staff. And they're using some of the EPIMS data now to validate and certify some of our title money. And so it's really important data to get correct and get in, and student core schedule. So I did a survey of districts in our geographical region. And all of the principals are year-round employees from Amherst Pelham to Athol Royalston, Franklin County Tech, Frontier, Gil Montague, Greenfield Hadley, Holloman, Mohawk, Pioneer, Mahar, Orange, and Petersham, and South Hadley. And so my proposal to the school committee, my recommendation is to make our principals full-time as all of the other principals are. Perhaps when calendar year principalship was designed 20 years ago, I certainly wasn't as much accountability or data collection and planning that needed to be done. But our principals are working during the summer and they're not getting paid for that. And so I would like to honor the work that they do by making them year-round principals. And compensating them.
Sorry, Julie has her hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, do the other principals in our union work, like, are they paid year-round, like, levered?
Nope, I'm making the recommendation at each one of our school committee meetings.
Great.
So what is the increase for just the principal?
4%.
Yeah, it's 33,876.
Okay, is there a line item or?
29.
Okay. Okay, I see that, yes. So I will be honest, and I always thought that our principal is a full-time position salaried.
Salaried, yes, but only days worked, not calendar year employee. So this would put the principals at the same, on the same sort of days worked contract as the superintendent, director of special education, director of finance and operation. But right now they do not work a chunk of the summertime.
Okay. So why don't we sort of go through the rest of the budget? We can always come back to that specific item.
Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Yeah.
Well, the next big number is teacher salaries. This includes an ESL teacher that we had to hire this year. And that money is coming out of school choice, so.
Yes, and that ESL teacher is 0.6 FTE. We had students move in this year into the district. And so as you all know, once a student moves in and tests that they need English language support, we are bound by law to provide that support. And so that position is currently in the budget or currently employed by us and needs to be in the budget for next year.
And just, just a little primer here. There is, we'll get to the end here, some staff in here that is being paid by some of our ESAR grants and school choice. And they're represented in the line items, just for clarity.
Correct. And Bruce, I think it's important to note to the people who are here that, you know, certainly using ESAR funds, we can't supplant, we need to supplement the budget. And that's a requirement from ESAR. But the positions we're using ESAR and school choice money are positions that are going to help support learning loss and learning gaps for our students relative to the pandemic and, you know, a long time of remote education. So for example, our interventionist salary, line 36, it's in the staff salary, that will come from ESAR funds. We increased our speech and language pathologist from 0.8 FTE to 1.0 FTE because of increased needs of our students due to the pandemic. And rather than put all of that on the town, we're going to support 50% of that increase with ESAR III and school choice funds. Because what we're seeing is that the additional need of support for speech and language is because of the pandemic. And so those funds from ESAR are available for us to use. And so those funds from ESAR are available for us to use.
And that's the teacher specialist.
I wonder if I can just, I jump ahead only because I wanna understand the bottom-line figure. If that's okay. So look at this budget. It looks like the total budget is gonna be about $216,212 more.
Yep.
Now, is, that's the total increase. And are there decreases below that for the SSR?
Yeah, if you look at mine, between 109 and 110, I've put in a school choice and ESAR III at $188,467 to really supplement the budget. About 100,000 of that is school choice, and the other 88 is ESAR funds. There's.
So Bruce, are we taking? Are we, are we taking the 216,000 and subtracting out the 188?
Yeah. 110, it says 55,545. That's what we're recommending, an increase to the town.
I don't see a line on my paper.
It is, it's not in the driver section, but in the budget section, and it's a pink section, or shaded if you didn't print it in color. It's on page nine.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry.
And so what we did, and the reason we did this, is so that people in the town and people on other committees can see the cost of running the school. But then, at the end, see the amount that we're supporting the budget with school choice funds, ESAR III funds, and rural aid.
Thank you. That's very clear. I appreciate it.
You know, just, just so everybody's aware, the early childhood revolving fund, as we have found out in the past couple of years, our youngest are coming in with, they're coming from families that need support. And that's why I'm budgeting significantly less money to support the budget. However, this is a program that absolutely means to be taken care of by the school, so.
Yeah, and this, this year in particular, and we're projecting next year, that we have high needs in our pre-K. And so they're going to require some additional support. And we are funding a para educator for pre-K from school choice as well, correct, Bruce?
Correct.
So can I ask a really dumb question?
No dumb questions.
Oh, yes, there are. So where's the bottom-line numbers? Like, what?
It's, if you can see line 110.
Yeah.
It says net total.
Yes, okay. So it's a 0.48% increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Once we support it with other funding. So we're asking for an increase dollars-wise of 55,545 for a percentage increase of 2.48.
Okay. So, can I make a suggestion before I get into the details? Is I think looking at the format of this is somewhat confusing. We need to put that in a different place that makes it a little bit more visible.
So can I ask a question, Dan? You know that initial page we have, it says in the budget, Shute's Berry Elementary School major budget drivers? Would it be helpful on that page to do the pink shaded section so people can see how we are using town funds?
Absolutely.
I mean, our funds, school choice and grant, okay?
Absolutely. Even if it's twice in the bud, in the thing.
Yep. I agree.
The first thing people are gonna look at is an increase of 216,901.5 increase. They're gonna be like, that's crazy.
So Bruce, can we have that pink twice, once at the beginning, once at the end?
It's not hard to copy and paste. And obviously, my, my calculation, I have a calculation here too, that 2481 is not, is not correct.
Right.
287 or something like that.
I appreciate the transparency and listing everything. I think that's really good. So thank you.
I know the finance committee is really concerned about how we're using our school choice funds. As you can see, we're, we're taking a good whack at, at probably well over $100,000.
But I also want to point out, Bruce, that unlike other districts, we've watched you school choice funds just to supplement the general budget. I think we've made very wise choices in looking at an interventionist, which is a temporary position, a temporary increase in speech and language, some temporary support for pre-K. So it's not like we're going to need to rely on this, you know, 10 years down the road. Because we've all talked about how that can be a slippery slope. So I feel like we're making wise budgetary choices in using school choice funding in Shute's Berry.
And is there any kind of assurance that the positions that we've hired for temporarily, they're not in, I mean, they're kind of embedded in the budget, but?
Right, like, so if they're grant-funded, when the grant funding is over, the funding for the position is over.
And the person is gone.
Gone or reduced, right? So if we're using some school choice funds, for example, to support a position, then, or the needs change, right? So we may need the para educator, for example, in pre-K. But once those students matriculate to higher grades, there may be less of a need because now they've been in school. So, you know, some of this Jackie and I feel really, is really connected to the pandemic and the lack of being in school. But the adjustment counselor, for example, that we have half-time is ESAR III funds. When the job was applied for and given, it said grant-funded, grant-dependent. So yes, it's been upfront with those positions.
Okay. So I want to ask other members if they have questions before I ask more. Lauren?
Wait a moment.
Okay. If you could just keep an eye out for hands, I would appreciate it.
Yep, Suzie's hands up.
Okay, Suzie, do you wanna?
Yeah, um, I wonder if it would be possible to say asterisk lines that are planning to be paid for from school choice or from ESAR in the, in the line they are. Or have a report that says what they are, just a paragraph report that says what the school choice and ESAR monies are being applied to by the position name.
So Suzie, I could do that. I actually could do both. Because, for example, the adjustment counselor falls under teacher specialist regular education, so it wouldn't be the entire budget line. But I also have talking points that sort of spell out exactly, and I could attach in less chicken scratch than what I'm reading to you now. I could attach something like that to the budget as an addendum. So people, so we could star it, and then the star would connect to the, the talking points page.
That sounds excellent, because I, it's hard to follow it when you're not familiar with it. And so I like the idea that Dan had about putting the, the section 105 to or 110 under the drivers. But then when people go to locate the stuff, it would be a way of either a paragraph or marking it. That'd be great.
We definitely can do that.
And Suzie, I just wanna say, I love your idea too. I think it's really good to sort of tease out those positions and identify them. So, perfect. Thank you.
And I love that I already have it done, so it's not gonna be that much work to do it.
The other question I had is the, the notes we got from Jackie suggesting that there might be a nature's classroom. Is that on the book still, or is that? I see field trips and programs, but I don't think that's it. No, it's not it, because she was $10,000.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's gonna occur this year. I think we're sort of waiting to see what transpires with the pandemic. But, you know, we just had this conversation in Irving and Swift River, because that's something we've done in those schools. And it's just too soon to make sort of that recommendation at this point.
And it is certainly allowable for the school to decide to engage that and decide to use school choice monies at that point. That's, we had that discussion at our finance committee meeting. And not everybody sees this the same way. But it, it's not that schools don't always know what's going to happen. And so it's okay to have needs come up and be met with that fund.
Julie has her hand up.
Just a reminder, Jackie sent out a document at the whole meetings, or last meeting about what we're, and what's her thoughts on how we're using school choice both this year and next year. The document, so some of that information is already available.
Okay, and Julie?
I was just going to say that some of these acronyms that we're using, it might be good to have a point at which terms are defined as well, to make sure that it's clear to everyone.
So are you saying, for example, like the ESAR?
Admittedly, Beth and I just looked it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know what, because we know it, Julie, it would be super helpful if, as you go through the budget and you see things that seem teacher speak or edger speak. If you would just email me and I can make sure it's spelled out. I'm not an acronym fan, but we have tiny spaces. So I certainly could do a little dictionary or?
Sure.
Page. For anybody, not just Julie. Julie brought it up. But if anybody is unclear, I certainly can make sure that's attached to the budget as well.
Okay. Good, that's also a very good point. So we definitely would need to come back to the principal position and increase. But is there anything else that anyone else noticed or had a concern about or question about?
Dan, could I say something?
Yes.
I don't have a concern. I just wanna reiterate that we have these regular discussions about how to use school choice and that we have established as our approach that we do use things that don't support the budget on a long-term basis that are those short-term things. So I just want to make sure that we keep saying that, so that this continues to be part of the discussion. Because that seems to be, and like Suzie said, you know, we, the school budgets are, they fluctuate considerably. So I feel like the, the way that we have chosen to approach these kinds of things has worked well for us. And I want us, I would love to see that continue.
Great. So if there's no other questions within the budget itself, I think we need to come back to the principal's position. So how does the salary compare compared to other districts?
Yep, I have that data as well. I just didn't want to over-talk at the beginning. So if we look at salaries in those same districts that I talked about, who have year-round principals, there is a low salary, and it's really an outlier of 88 from Petersham, but they have a really small amount of students. So the, I would say the low end would be around 90. The high end is 132,000, with most of the salary falling in the 95 to 100 range for principals. And so the 4% increase for our Shute's Berry principal would be $107,760. So it falls solidly in the middle, on the lower end of the middle of the range of salaries in our geographical area.
Okay, so my thought is, as far as the position, is yeah, it definitely needs to be a full-time position. There's obviously lots that happens during the summer, including, as you mentioned, hiring. So I, I mean, yeah, I'm embarrassed to think that I didn't know that it's not a full-time position or a position that's based on a year-round.
Yeah. And I don't think it was something that, I don't know, I, I guess I wasn't here when the position was created that way. So I don't know if it was ever explained. And then when I arrived, it was just that way. But, you know, probably four years ago, I, I started researching and I started talking to the principals about duties and tasks over the summer and compensation. And I just feel like there's so much that needs to get done in the summer. Never mind the past two summers where the work has been non-stop. And, you know, our, our salaries for principals do fall a little bit below. So I feel like we would be in step with our, our region if we have calendar year full-time compensated principals.
And you're looking at schools of similar size in terms of the number of students?
It's our entire region, and so some of the schools are bigger. But those schools also, a lot of them have assistant principals or deans. And as I said, I forget who I was talking, oh, Tuesday, we had Irving's meeting. There are some jobs, there are some parts of a principal that are just part of being a principal, whether or not you have 125 students or 345. And so, yes, there are bigger schools listed here. For example, you know, Deerfield Elementary is a larger school. That principal gets paid 105, and there's an assistant principal there at 76.5. So.
Economy of scale.
Economy of scale. Thank you. This is my seventh meeting this week, so I couldn't think of that word, Julie. Thank you for being my thesaurus.
And how do the other members feel about that increase?
I'm curious about what kind of jump is there in working hours?
So I don't have that data at the, at, right here to give you definitive numbers, but I certainly could get it. But it would be all of the month of July and the beginning of August, as well as the tail end of June, dependent on when we get out of school. And, you know, some days principals work 10-hour days, 8-hour days, 12-hour days. So because they're salaried, you know, I don't have a definitive hour. But I could see if I could work something out and get more information to you.
Jennifer, up to this point, have they been doing all of these things? They listed just not getting paid for them?
Yes.
So do we want to approve the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the budget as presented for FY '23.
I move to approve the budget for FY '23.
A second.
Okay, could I just add one thing to that, Lauren, in the minute? If we could just please put the total amount, which is an increase of $55,545, which is 2.48%. Are you okay about adding that in there? And was, there was a second, correct? And was there was a second, correct?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. And are you okay with that amendment?
Where's the number?
That would be in that pink section again.
Yeah, I didn't read that number.
Oh, sorry. Did I get the numbers right?
Yeah, so I switched, I switched things a little bit here, but it's 2,580,091 for the gross and that's of the town is 2,293,124 corrected number. In your in the pink seat, you have the bottom lines incorrect.
Okay, I was gonna say that's the number that I have.
Yeah, you have to. Yeah, okay.
So what is the actual number?
To the town is 2,293,124.
Okay, which is a change of how much?
It's an increase of 55,545 dollars or 2.48%.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll roll call vote. All in favor, haze eye?
Rose, I.
Okay, Lauren?
Thomas, take an eye.
Okay, and Steve?
Sullivan abstained.
Okay. All right. And we have on the agenda next is F Y 23 Union 28 budget. Do we need to talk about that for any reason?
I don't think so. I mean, it's embedded in our um, shoots berry budget. We did, um, I I think the biggest discussion at the joint supervisory was the curriculum coordinator. Um, I had recommended a full time curriculum coordinator, but we did reinstate to the previous, which was a 0.6 F T E curriculum coordinator. So thank you to the joint supervisory for supporting that.
Okay.
And that budget was approved and it's reflected in this budget, the the change that won't change, so.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Report superintendent.
I'll be very brief um, due to the later start and later hour. Um, we have finally emptied out every file cabinet at the old office. And uh, there were flyers from responsive classroom from 1996. Don't know why they were still down there. They were, we're cleaned out. Pam and I have eight boxes of old Union 28 file drawers to go through. Some records need to be retained, some don't, but they're under my desk at Swift River for us to go over. We will have everything in the storage unit, so all we have left are town reports to go to the town and we can call it a wrap. Budgets, budgets and more budgets is what we've been doing at uh, central office and with the leadership team. And lastly, um, we had interviews yesterday for director of finance and operations and we are moving forward in the process. I don't want to say too much. I don't, we need to keep um, interviews confidential, but um, viable candidates to move forward with. So I'll leave it at that and update you as soon as we have um, any further information. And that's my report this evening.
Sorry, how many viable candidates?
We're moving forward with
Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear the number. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Jennifer? All right. Thanks for cleaning out all that stuff.
Yep, there's a little bit of um, mouse droppings and chewings left by, but Pam and I persevered in our icky clothes and gloves. So we're good to go.
Luckily, you can have masks.
We did have masks on. Mine had sequins, but you know, I have to be glittery somehow.
And thank Pam, she's incredible.
She is. I will pass that along tomorrow.
Director of Finance and Operations report.
So to follow up with Jen and moving stuff up, there was building plans and building information and all that kind of stuff. I've worked with the custodians to distribute that necessary buildings. What they do with it is for them. The other thing is I had a little issue with our the air conditioning system and had to get some things fixed, so that that was taken care of. And I stepped in and saw the town administrator the other day posed a question to me that I hadn't even given a thought to. And I'm posing it to the school committee. Um, there's engineering that's required for um, upgrading the controls on heat system. It's 16,500 dollars. She would like the school to help pay for that. Posing it to you guys if you want to help or not, it's up to you.
Is there any special funding that's available through COVID?
Well, that that would be a town on the town side. They have art money that they I think they could use. And I also think there's B O E R money that could be used, so. That's an avenue that I'd like to pursue with Becky, so.
All right, why don't you continue to pursue that with Becky to see if there's funds available?
Now, I know the town did an appropriation, I think. Be quite honest with you, engineering is could be considered part of that too, so.
Right.
I'm just telling you what I was asked and passing it along. Quite frankly, anything coming out of the general fund school budget this year, I think is is non existent compared to where we were last year for sure. So we're using all our resources this year. I will have a conversation with Becky and Rebecca.
Any progress on their school roof?
Um, the roof is planning and uh, good, thanks for asking, Dan. Because I asked Becky about it. They're planning to do that next month. Still in in the plan. They hope, I believe they were planning to do it Christmas break. But if I were them, I might get started a little sooner, but we'll have to work around kids in the school, so. And the other thing is, I believe um, the conference room door is at um, whoever we purchased it from and Bob's working on finding an installer for that, so. Things are happening.
And the painting of the school and and repairs to the siding, Steve, did you talk to anyone about that?
That is going on the capital plan list when we meet next.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Bruce?
Well, that's it for me tonight, Dan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And Bruce, is this your last meeting with us?
No. I have one more.
Nope, he's not going anywhere yet.
Because next month we're meeting on the 16th, I will be here for that meeting.
We're not letting him go yet.
Good. All right. So that said,
So I I can share Jackie's report just briefly. Um, the shoots berry students have participated in three rounds of pool testing. And the students are really getting the routine down. And we have more than 80% of our school population participating in testing, which I think is one of the highest rates in Union 28. So yay, shoots berry. You saw the survey um, for staff members relative to the masking, which we discussed earlier. And shoots very completed virtual conferences. They were really successful. And um, some parents have asked for that option to continue in the future when we can actually do things in person that we have an option, which I think is a great idea um, for families, especially families with little ones or for sports when they're at sports events. So I'm glad parents asked about keeping that option. And then we have the super leaky roof, the slider doors and um, the wood rot that needs to be painted. And Jackie said Steve is aware of these issues and is advocating for the school with the town committee. So she said to say thank you to Steven and that is uh, Jackie's report for this evening.
Great, thank you. Perhaps maybe next time we can get just the numbers of students?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. All right, Amherst Pelham rep report, Steve?
All right, I'll be quick to the first thing is the meeting on Saturday. I it's not, this one is really just a history lesson and we're going to go over how, where where funds come from and where they go. And the history of the um, regional assessment method that we use. And I believe Susie that we've decided that we're if we have to, we're gonna tell them we're going full statutory. Is that correct?
No, we're not going. Well, I I'm pushing particularly, it's a listening learning time. And um, the prompts did ask us, what is your preferred assessment method and why? So the town will say statutory, but we won't be pressing and pushing and arguing about the percentage and how to get there.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm just mentioning that because this is a meeting where there's going to be one member from each town that is going to be speaking. It's not like the next ones where we really can use everybody at the table just to show as a show of force. So this one's not as important, but if you really do want to learn about the history and how the budget works, then it's a good one to attend. And the other thing is that I did vote yes for allowing the Amherst sixth graders into the building, but it was really a moot point because with all five Amherst delegates voting that it didn't matter what Amherst, what shoots berry Pelham and Leverett said, because we were already outvoted five to four. And it actually was, it was seven to one to one. Leverett, Leverett abstained and one Pelham member said no. And but there was one interesting thing that the that Leverett brought up at the school committee meeting that I hadn't thought of and mentioned to you guys was the concern if Amherst allows school choice to the sixth grade while they're at the middle school, that would, you know, because the draw is going to be sports and the drama program. And if Amherst does allow school choice as sixth graders at the middle school, that could be an issue. Which we, you know, we I didn't think about that at all, but Leverett had discussed it, I guess, quite a bit.
Do they typically take in uh, school choice students at the sixth grade level? Or I guess they're probably reevaluate that.
They they're they're reevaluating that now. And as of as of the fall of 2023, it will just be Amherst in the the building. Thank you.
Okay.
So I need to understand that. Steve, are you saying that if Amherst offers school choice to the sixth graders that are being going to move into the middle school, kids from shoots Mary Mike choice into Amherst, is that the issue?
Yes, that that's the big concern in Leverett is that there'll be a number of students that want to, you know, I mean, it makes sense. You're gonna get a whole bunch of cool stuff as a sixth grader with the sports and the drama and other clubs and things of that sort. So yeah, it's it's a big concern.
Thank. And um, so for the meeting on Saturday, just to clarify, that's the statutory method with the five year rolling average. Correct. Do we need to be there then? No, because it's a learning lesson.
I I I think that um, at our, yeah, last night meeting, people are acting like other people need to learn and listen, but not us. But there's a lot of people here that haven't ever been in in this discussion. And so I I I do encourage people to come and learn and not just view it as um, Amherst council people are the ignorant ones. That that's not a good foot to start on.
Just to let you know, I plan to attend because I have a lot to learn there. Um, but I did have a question about the 8:30 meeting versus the nine o'clock meeting because there's a world of difference with three little kids in my house of 8:30 versus like two meetings versus one meeting, so.
I think the 8:30 meeting is for the town of shoots berry to have a conversation. And then the nine o'clock meeting is with the town council of Amherst and the other towns.
And it's because um, the select board hasn't been able to have a discussion. And they wanted to hear the discussion that the FinCom, the points the FinCom came up with and be be feel a little bit more oriented to the discussion that will begin at nine, but everybody can come at nine and learn. I also find, we'll find out if if um, Jim Walton, the chair of FinCom sent out his drafted points. Y'all could receive them and then you'll see what we're going to be saying at 8:30.
Right. And just to clarify, Susie, I was not uh, really suggesting that people don't attend. I do think it's good, especially for people who haven't been involved in the process. But I also didn't know how this was going to all unfold with interactions and everything else, so.
Yeah, I wasn't saying you were thinking that. I just, I felt like people in our meeting were saying that. And I just want to encourage people to feel it's it's welcome to learn.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else, Steve?
No.
Union 28.
Um, budget approved. Uh, next meeting is um, January
10. January.
January 10th. Thank you. Tough to read without glasses. Um, we will be talking about the substitute rates at that meeting um, for Union 28.
Great. All right. Uh, collaborative educational services, we had our meeting last night. Auditors approved uh, our business office and budgets. We're looking to restructure our business office. We put out uh, bids for outside services. Mainly because we really need the capacity for staff. It's been very hard to find people. We have a couple of people out on leave. And the people that are behind are working like 80 to 90 hours a week. So we're looking at restructuring there. I'll forward you just some information on annual report, some of the things that they do. For those of you who are newer that don't really know all of the things that the collaborative does, they provide professional development, um, special educational services for kids at Heck Academy as well as Mount Tom Academy. Uh, they serve uh, 36 member districts. Um, also serve uh, educational services for incarcerated youth throughout the state of Massachusetts as well as students and institutional settings for special needs. There were a few teachers that were recognized throughout the state for their service, so it was really nice. And things just keep humming along. That's it for that. And then uh, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference, I appreciate uh, this committee sending me there. I always think it's an opportunity to learn as well, uh, to network, um, to find out what other committees are doing. One of the things that the collaborative is really looking at is trying to provide support and services, health related services for students and almost every school, uh, which seemed to be sort of a theme that uh, is a trend that many students were talking about that uh, attended the conference as well as other districts. There were some resolutions uh, that had come to all of us. Those were approved. Uh, basically those resolutions are things like um, relating to uh, Native American uh, logos. Um, another resolution was related to testing, so you can look through those. That was about it. So thank you very much. All right, policies. First reading for G B E A Staff Ethics Conflicts of Interest. So are there any edits to that this evening? We not, we're not voting on those, but any edits to that policy? We not, we're not voting on those, but any edits to that policy? Nothing? Okay, all right. If you find something, please don't hesitate to email Jennifer with any edits that you see.
Or my, my partners in policy, Julie and Bethany.
Julie and Bethany, perfect, thank you. And then the next is the G B E C, Drug-Free Workplace. Any edits? Okay, look, good to me, perfect. Uh, next item is gonna be the first vote on the deletion of a policy and negotiations.
Yeah, yeah, Massachusetts Association of School Committees has combined the negotiations policy, so this is no longer, um, a M A S C policy.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the policy H on negotiations?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, haze eye?
Sullivan, I.
Rose, I.
Martell, I.
Thomas, take one eye.
Trevor, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's a motion to delete, not to approve, right?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification, Trevor.
Good thing we have you, Trevor.
I was hoping you were even here. I couldn't, I can't see you on the screen. With that said, I have to say, Trevor, you are like the unsung hero. Nobody ever thanks you for all that you do. I can tell you, it is, I appreciate you taking the minutes. They're efficient, they're thorough, you get a good idea of what the meetings are about. And I can't tell you how difficult it was in the past to get people to take minutes and oftentimes what those minutes looked like, so I wanna thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you guys right back. I, as, as the, uh, Union President of a chapter of a statewide faculty and staff union, I can tell you that having somebody else take good minutes while you're trying to run a meeting is, uh, worth its weight in gold. So anyway, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely, because I know it's very difficult to participate in a meeting and take minutes.
So in this season of gratefulness and thankfulness, we share our gratitude with you.
Yes, thank you. All right, so just to go over future business, there's a Chutesbury Policy Committee on Thursday, December sixteenth at six-thirty. School committee meeting on the sixteenth at seven. Uh, Union Twenty-Eight Joint Supervisory Committee is on January tenth at six-thirty. Um, and whether there's a budget personnel, that'll be determined. If there's anybody that would like to have an agenda item put on, please let myself know, or Jennifer will always, um, accommodate. Um, is there anything else that anyone would like to say?
I just wanted to say I'm sorry it took a little bit for me to get the meeting going. I had no idea what I was doing. And we still finished efficiently, so yay, Chutesbury.
I wasn't sure what I was doing wrong, so I kept doing the same thing.
There, there are some meetings I attend that start on time and go way later, so you did fine, Lauren.
But we, we might have had a problem in the policy meeting too.
We did.
Did you?
Yeah, we didn't have a host. So we're gonna take care of that, and my, my two policy partners are gonna be co-hosts.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know how this all works, but I appreciate your patience with me. I've learned a lot with technology, but still, I don't know what the stumbling blocks are. I appreciate your patience. All right, if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Thanks, Lauren. You saved me again.
I'm glad I could help.